I'm Mr. L 104. And a quorum of the board is present, almost. Yes, a quorum of the board is present. Bob, you don't work here anymore, you can't stand up here, I'm sorry. You're always welcome, you just can't get through security downstairs anymore.
No.
So.
No.
So the State Board meeting on February 10th is called to order. And we're going to jump right into public participation. Mertz, please.
I have one form for public participation, if you have a form and I've not yet seen it, if you could get that, pass that up here, that would be great. John Stewart is the form that I have. Mr. Stewart, if you would approach the table, oh, there he is. And I will remind you that they're...
Really funny.
Sorry to be talking as you're walking. Go ahead and have a seat, I'll remind you that this is five minutes and the board does not engage in conversation and they're certainly happy to hear what you've got to say. And so we'll be ready whenever you are.
Thank you very much. I would especially like to thank Marilyn Schneider for her professionalism and responding to my making the State Board of Education aware of a wonderful teacher by the name of Michelle Anderson, a longtime friend of mine. Dave Michelson and I have to admit that we'll be going to Westland John Glenn High School for the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War and how history students will learn about that when we were in high school. There are many other dedicated teachers in Michigan who are, deserve to be recognized. They have a lot of concerns though, folks. And I want to welcome my dear friend, Dr. Pamela Pugh Smith, a University of Michigan graduate. The concerns are quietly, privately exploding. Excessive testing is hurting our students. The professional respect that you have, Mr. Flanagan, Superintendent Flanagan, from your former group, the Michigan Association of School Administrators, superintendents are going to organize from a point of view of wanting a moratorium on tests. Testing is hurting our students to the point that it has reached critical mass. They're starting to question the motive for money-making and the use of test scores to evaluate students as well as teachers in a manipulative manner. It is intellectually dishonest to make teachers plug in every day and you can say one bad word, Pearson. I was hoping my good friend Craig Ruff would be here, education advisor to Governor Snyder. Second issue, we're concerned about the request that all charter school students have their foundation grant raised $1,500 in the school aid fund and in the budget. If that is to be the case, then raise every public school student $1,400. On a substantive note, we need to focus on the issue of the arts education. STEM must become STEAM, as you're aware, by including the arts, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. For the record, in the 1950s, there was band orchestra and choir in 4th, 5th, and 6th grade in the Wyandotte Public Schools and many other school districts all across Michigan. I want to strongly support the teaching of band orchestra and choir and the music programs in our public schools. The arts are the foundation of education. I am an interlocutor, so that's my bias. Finally, being a public school teacher today means working to prove the critics wrong. Being a public school teacher today means standing up for what is in the best interests of children regardless of what the corporate moneyed interests say. Being a public school teacher today means doing your best to deliver a quality learning experience to each and every child who walks through that classroom door. Being a public school teacher means standing together with fellow teachers to let parents and communities know that we care about their children who are our children. Luanna Simon, my friend at Michigan State, longtime president there, loves to use the phrase, "We have the responsibility for Michigan's children." We need to restore the greatness of public education. Michigan's children deserve the best and we are going to give them the best. Things seem to be coming full circle here. Kathleen Strauss and I were hanging out at an honorary dinner with 92-year-old Judge Damon Keith, who's been on the bench 47 years, that's what's happening in Wayne County and at Schoolcraft College. We're seeing Judge Keith honored for his steadfast support of civil rights. I would commend him to you and I'm so glad to see that I will be followed today by Dr. Tom Pedroni and Karen Toomey, who are here to ask for your intellectual honesty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any more people that wish to offer public participation comments? Thank you.
And John? John, we don't engage in response, but I'm going to ask our staff to send a clip to you of the testing issue this morning that we spent about an hour on, because I think you'd be very helpful, your former colleagues, the testing regime here is based strictly on following law, we don't exceed it, we are doing exactly what we're required, but we're with you and feel that the testing is in excess and would ask for some help in trying to get legislation changed along those lines.
Well, Delta County, Escanaba, the superintendent says, "Stewart, go public." I am organizing a group of superintendents to say, "Stop."
And you're saying it to the legislature?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Yes.
I'm just trying to make sure your energy which is high.
My six years of legislative experience, well, let's use another 92-year-old, Governor Milliken is hoping that they get enlightened, referring to our state legislators.
Thank you, sir. Speaking of enlightened, we brought some folks onto the team that I think are adding a lot of enlightenment and this is a tradition we've had for a while now, so our deputies, starting with Susan, are going to introduce some of our new MDE team members today.
OGS has four new team members and I'm going to introduce each of them and when I'm done introducing all four, ask each person to briefly describe what your role is in the Great Start. First Heather Lucas in the Great Start Preschool and Out-of-School Time Learning, Danielle Johnson, Great Start Administrative and Fiscal Unit, Mark Dillingham, Great Start Child Development and Care, and Beth Donchi, Great Start Child Development and Care. Would each of you please briefly describe what your role is in the Office of Great Start?
I work with, I'm an analyst and I work with MEGS and I'll be doing the allocations for GSR.
I'm Heather Lucas and I am an education consultant with the Great Start Learning Program.
I'm Mark Dillingham, I'm the program manager, actually, for the Child Development and Care Program, specializing in policy and making sure technology and policy and program work together.
And I'm Beth Donchi, I'm an analyst focusing on technology and data within the Child Development and Care Program and really working as a liaison between DHS and MDE for this EDC program.
Thank you, well, welcome.
So I'd like for Michelle Ribanci to stand up, she is the new State Director of 21st Century Learning, she comes by way of Eastern ISD, Eastern UP ISD, and why don't you tell us a little bit about the work that you've accomplished there and what your focus is here?
I was working with the 19 districts in the eastern end of UP and really on curriculum instruction and assessment matters and really moving toward genuine integration of technology into both the teaching and learning for students and also the reduction of gaps between our low-income students and our specialty population, most notably our Native American students. So really keeping a close eye on data and doing a lot of good work around infusion of technology into classroom.
Welcome, Michelle. May I just mention before Vanessa that in Michelle's case, a lot of you probably know this, but leaders in technology have been from the UP for years to come, for years now, and partly out of necessity, but it's one of these things that we're very fortunate to get someone to move down here and actually join the team and we, I can't say I've ever gotten more positive response on selection that we made, so we've gotten equal, but not more, and so thanks for joining the team, Michelle.
Joining the Division of Accountability Services in our awesome office of systems integration, if Michelle wants to tell everybody what to do, please.
Hi, so I am senior project manager that's going to facilitate the transition towards M-Step, my access, which are the new online testing administration tools that are going to be rolled out to replace me from a pre-made system to an online test. My job is to make sure the transition is smooth, help the schools in facilitating the MDEs, and also the success of the test.
Thank you, welcome. Okay, we're back to the committee of the whole meeting and this is really going to be an exciting hour or so for us. Each of the presenters that are coming today, there's three groups really, and they're each going to spend about 15 minutes with us and there'll be some time for interaction with the board. And the first one I'd like to bring up to the table, I think it's in this order, so let me make sure I have this right, Rogelio Landin, and I think you might want to add some introduction, Lupe? Please, join us at the table, I'm sorry, and Lupe, I didn't know if you wanted to add any remarks.
Yes, I want to welcome Rogelio Landin from Detroit area to the table today, and we have heard a lot of presentations on problems that are occurring in the education of our state, and today we're going to hear from Rogelio Landin, who has brought some solutions to some of the problems that we have heard. And hopefully, we can take them to heart and maybe incorporate in whatever we are doing here at the table at State Board of Education members. And Rogelio, I welcome you and I'm sure the board as a whole does too. Thank you.
Let me just express my deepest appreciation to the board for the invitation and the opportunity to share with you 10, the result of 10 years of work in this arena. President Austin, Superintendent Flanagan, Vice President Ulrich, board members, thank you one and all for this opportunity. To bring before you thoughts, reflections, that will serve as the foundation for understanding in terms of the solution that we will ultimately present for your consideration. Resource Equity 5 and 2, Delivering the Promise of Education. The President during the State of the Union stated, "I want our actions to tell every child in every neighborhood, your life matters." The overview of what we're going to discuss will cover four areas, National Education Initiatives, Meaningful Access to Technology, Michigan Education, and High Value Solution. Secretary of Education stated, "Schools must give poor and minority students equal access to resources." The Office of Civil Rights, Department of Ed, can now look into resource disparities that range the following areas. Equal access to educational opportunities, to qualified teachers, particular professional development. The Office of Civil Rights can also look into whether states and districts are providing poor and minority students with their fair share of qualified support staff, such as school psychologists, guidance counselors, and paraprofessionals. Our superintendent has stated in the past the disparity in just the school counselor area. And equal access to technology, including laptops, tablets, the internet, and instructional materials such as calculators and library books. Lily Eskelson Garcia, President of the NEA, has said, "We know what equity looks like. With up-to-date equipment and a library full of books, you know those schools, they are the best schools in the world. Equity means every school should look like those schools." Again, literacy. New federal budget initiatives that are contained in the budget just released by the President last week involve equity in outcomes and leveraging and resource utilization considerations and 10-year commitments to these initiatives. My brother's keeper and its six goals provide for children entering school cognitively, physically, socially, and emotionally ready, reading at third-grade level, graduating from high school, completing post-secondary ed, being employed, and safe from violent crime. One of the ways that that can be implemented with some fidelity is with an accreditation initiative, and I've had conversations with folks in advanced ed about the possibility of adding district incentives for minority male achievement and closing achievement gap improvement as optional accreditation criteria to incentivize and encourage participation. Race to the Top Goals, while Michigan was not a recipient of Race to the Top funds, except recently in the early childhood Race to the Top, still point to better data systems, support for teacher and school leaders, and increased resources for the rigorous interventions needed to turn around the lowest-performing schools as priority reforms. Connect Ed Initiative. In Michigan, 3,450 schools and over 1.5 million students are impacted by this initiative. Presently, fewer than 1 in 3 of America's classrooms have internet access. The Connect Ed Initiative plans to connect 99% of all students with next-generation high-speed broadband within five years. I submit to you, we can do it in two. This is all given, built up on a foundation of the National Education Technology Plan, which focuses on five areas: learning, assessment, teaching, infrastructure, and productivity. Essentially, we must rethink basic assumptions and redesign our education system. We must leverage technology. Rethinking educational equity in a digital era is about forging strong partnerships between District Title I and technology leaders. Project RED put forth these nine key implementation factors which you have before you. Digital learning and technology, federal policy recommendations to seize the opportunity, provide for government having the opportunity to assist school districts by creating policies that encourage innovation and provide options for digital learning and technology. Connecting technology to schools and students. Michigan does have a statewide broadband network for its schools and Michigan does allow additional flexibility by permitting schools to use funding for instructional materials on digital resources. English learners, a national asset and investment. They are pervasively included in every one of these areas and they are extremely important for the following reasons: they represent the largest group of students in public schools and in a handful of states, Michigan being one of them, has experienced over a 200% increase in English language learners. Michigan Dream at Risk, an article written by our President, Mr. Austin, outlines a number of things for our purposes, the most important being the 16% decline in K-12 investment in the last decade. The state, our state schools chief, Superintendent Flanagan, has been quoted as saying that Michigan is 10 years behind leading states. I would like to focus on the area of professional development and the number of teachers trained through state-sponsored programs essentially being zero, and his statement that this is something we have to catch up on. Michigan Proficiencies. Third grade reading, 70%, 3 to 8, 38.5%, ACT college readiness, 19.7%. Michigan Merit, all subjects, 17.4%. College readiness, 20%. Economically disadvantaged, 48.4% for all intents and purposes, half of our students. What you see here is as students go through the system, we lose 50% proficiencies in just about every category, all the way out now to. Last year, you had a presentation by, from Amber Arayano and the Education Trust from the Midwest called Stall the Soaring. The bottom line, when kids get what they need to learn, they learn. The NEA also shared a presentation with you where Mr. Cook commented to this board, "There's too much money, too many vested in keeping things as they are." And closed with, "If you think we not only can do a better job, but must do a better job, it will no doubt take a few profiles and courage to step up and say so." I believe those profiles and courage are seated at this table. Poverty is the single greatest factor limiting student achievement. This graph shows a convergence of total students and eligible students being over 75% school lunch-eligible in public schools. Preparation is key for success in college and career. I would call your attention to the alignment of the over-representation of Black Hispanic and low-income students at the below-basic level and the extreme under-representation in the advanced level. Closing the Funding Equity Gap. The point here being that equity will be reached in 2031, 17 years from now. Michigan Speaks, the citizens' agenda for 2014 elections, essentially summarized in these two statements. The new normal: do more, don't expect more money. However, the quest for innovative solutions must continue. To all of this, our response is a leveraged bundled solution to completely educate the whole child out of poverty. It is made up of four components, an ebook ecosystem, providing device and internet access for off-campus continued education, student assistance program, and cultural competency professional development training. The ebook ecosystem is an innovative economical customized library ecosystem, providing portals for students, teachers, and administrators that provide comprehensive qualitative and quantitative analytics, providing real-time data, and it also serves as infrastructure for the management of all assessments. Device and Internet Access. A new device will be donated for each student annually. Internet access, donated for each student annually. Under Title I, this could be a perpetual replenishment strategy with no device over one year old at any point in time in the system. Doing this this way, you can reach one-to-one by the 2016 assessments. It effectively adds $78 million currently to the existing $50 million state tech budget, no RFP required and it's tech budget neutral. Student Assistance Program covers and deals with behavioral wellness, not just for the student, but for the family as well, providing talk, text, connect, real-time technology, and 24/7 365 access. All the clinicians are licensed masters of social work, for the purposes of comparison, estimates of a conventional model in terms of cost and another model in terms of service are provided. Performance Ed SAP for student and family, donated. Cultural Competency Professional Development. In order to close the achievement gap, this is based on the work of the Ohio Project, there are three pillars: socio-emotional development, academic acceleration and recovery, cultural competency professional development for both teacher and administrator modules, covering who's teaching, who's learning, how to teach, how to learn, and what to learn. We offer a high-value proposition that we estimate will cost $500 a student, providing a value of $43,250 a student. The total investment for the number of students that I've been in conversations with in terms of our priority and focus schools would be 300,000 students and 500 schools would be 150 million. The donated products and services are worth 405 million, which can then be converted to 20% in-kind to leverage an additional 80% or 1.62 billion, for a total of 2.025 billion in potential philanthropy and/or grants, a 1350% return on investment. The numbers are before you. In closing, the State Board of Education found last December that Michigan is now in the bottom tier of states in academic achievement and other states are racing past us in improving student performance. Ultimately, a successful digital transformation requires ubiquitous leadership, creating a culture in which everyone can act with focus and coherency around a strategic vision. We must leverage resources by creating the context and conditions for leadership to take enlightened risk. It's why we have reinvented our role in schools, serving as digital proponents to support students in new and innovative ways as we scale our 21st century flexible blended learning environments. We are each an essential piece of a digital transformation professional development ecosystem. Last year in June, Secretary Duncan addressed the National Parent Teacher Association Convention. He said, "If you remember only one thing from what I say today, please make it this: to prepare our children for the future that they'll face, public education has to change. It has to evolve." Performance Ed is prepared to move forward with this innovative education program and remains open and available to anyone and everyone who is interested in engaging in a conversation in how we realize the benefits of this kind of a leveraged strategy. Thank you very much, with a minute or two to spare.
Thank you, Rogelio. I think what we're going to do is hear from all three and then the board may have some comments after that, was our agenda planning format, so thank you so much, Rogelio. Now, it's a pleasure to bring up former MDE associate here, been gone for a number of years, Bob Morris, and his colleague Nahid Hock from the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, and they requested, John, an opportunity and can throw both of us on, Jonathan, if you had any other comment you'd like to wrap us with.
No, just happy to have you back, and we're talking STEM, right?
That's right.
Very important topic, so help us, help educate us.
Well, good, we'll do our best. It'll be Nahid more than me, no doubt. It's great to be back here, to be in front of some old faces and who have a chance to see some...
Wait, wait, whoa, whoa, whoa.
You mean experienced faces. Some well-experienced faces at Department of Education and the board.
And Bob, may I?
Don't take it personal, Mike.
I'm not, although I understand it. I do want to say, I went to Bob's, those of you who don't know, Bob wrote a beautiful book, had a lot of your dad in it from the UAW days. I went to the book signing and I thought it was great and I don't think it's inappropriate maybe for you to just mention the title and how folks could get it, it's really a fascinating read.
The book is Built in Detroit: A Story of the UAW, a Company, and the Gangster. I do presentations, so I'm always willing to do presentations, and the book can be available on, or is available at amazon.com or barnesandnoble.com.
I read it and it's worth reading.
Thank you.
I'm reading it.
Good, yeah, we have to have lunch after. Good, well, let me get started and my colleague here is Nahid Hock, and we're really looking forward to addressing the board, the top education policymakers in the state. We hope you find our comments of value. I don't know if they're in front of you yet, yeah, I think the magazine, our SEMSCOPE, is devoted 100% to this issue and it's a magazine we're very proud of and actually has become one of our most popular magazines that we distribute across the state, or at least our region and across the state. We're here today actually representing two organizations, SEMCOG, as many of you know, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, we're a regional organization, regional planning organization, our members come from the governmental and education communities. We basically are, represent seven counties, Wayne, Oakland, McComb, St. Clair, Laustenaw, Livingston, and Monroe Counties, about half the population of the state. We have another organization housed at SEMCOG, SEMCOG called the Metropolitan Affairs Coalition. To the best of our knowledge, MAC is the only place in Michigan where our members to that group are, who are composed of business, labor, government, and education members, sit and talk about issues, state policy issues. And, you know, a lot of times there's disagreement, but a lot of times there's really good education and occasionally we get consensus on items, and we like to share that when it happens. Our STEM careers and skill... Our STEM Careers and Skill Trades Initiative that we're talking about today has been sponsored by SEMCOG, by MAC, and we're very pleased with that. STEM or science, technology, engineering, and math education curriculums are great career paths for people at whatever phase or level. It can be skilled trades, it can be some trade school after a high school, but post-education experience, something I know this board has talked about a lot. And it's important. Doesn't matter whether you're at the rocket scientist level or you're an electrician. These are really good opportunities, they pay well, and they're important to our state and our country for our economic development system. There's also a huge need in the area of soft skills in the workplace. Soft skills, we've learned especially, again, this comes from our private sector partners at MAC, employers will hire for technical skills, but they fire for soft skills. Employers want people, clearly who have the experience, but they need people who can answer the telephone. They need people who can communicate in conferences and in meetings. They need people who have everyday skills. And somewhere along the lines, we don't teach this like we did. And this is something that's very important. Our MAC employees, or employers, have really figured out, this can be the difference of success or failure when it comes to a lot of their projects. Our objective for this project has been to develop a comprehensive strategy for increasing awareness, recognitions, and acceptance of broader menu of career options, including skilled trades, technical, other STEM career paths. But the acceptance is from students, from parents, counselors, teachers, policymakers, and legislators. This is something that we've got to deal with across the board. I'm pleased to say we've worked quite closely with Senator Kowal on this issue. Mike's a skilled trades guy. And he, excuse me, Senator Kowal is a skilled trades guy. And he's sensed a need to deal with this issue for a long time. He's promised us hearings on this issue as he goes forward. So now, let me turn it over to Nahid. She's going to correct my mistakes that I've made and then proceed to give you her experience on so many of the frontline issues that she's been working with.
Well, thank you, Bob, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. So as Bob said, our STEM Careers and Skilled Trades Initiative was based on the need for filling the skills gap. We hear about 80,000 jobs going, needing to be filled in the state, and yet at the same time, we have a higher unemployment rate than the national average, yet where's the mix match? So what we're going to do is talk about the strategy, but also start off by saying that the reason SEMCOG and MAC are involved in this issue is because in about 2010, we developed the region's first comprehensive economic development strategy. And in this, and this was a time during the recession when we realized that we need to change the way we operate, both in the economy, in terms of our business development, but also in our education practices. And we looked at what are the 11, what are the things that are really going to turn the economy around? And we found that there were 11 key strategies. And these are on the wheel that you see, and as you can see, four of them are related to education. So part of what we've been doing with our MAC and SEMCOG members, which as Bob said, has business, labor, government, education at the table, was look at how do we implement some of these strategies in terms of creating a workforce for the economy of the future? And so retooling our workforce and educating our future workers is basically key to moving the economy forward. And again, as Bob said, we've worked on various issues, and one of the first ones was actually soft skills. Our employers said that we really need to have enough engineers and skilled trades persons, but what we really need for everyone to have is soft skills or essential skills, basic workplace skills. So we hire people who have a master's degree, but we fire them because they can't answer the phone. We need to be able to really have both, every employee, whether at every level of an organization needs to have these soft skills. We also did another project called the Infrastructure and Jobs Asset Map, where we analyzed some of the jobs that would be created by some of these major infrastructure projects planned for Southeast Michigan. So the new bridge, the M1 rail, major improvements to I-94 and 75, they're going to create jobs. How do we make our local workforce more competitive to be able to get those jobs? What are the jobs that are going to be created and what are the skills that we need? And as part of our analysis, we found that there was a huge lack of people with technical skills, both in and around the projects, but in the state as a whole. And so our education institutions are not producing enough people with these skills. And so that hinders our ability to put the people into work. And so really, we need to address that issue so that we have the workforce here. We don't want, we don't have to be hiring from other states to fill the jobs here. And so our STEM Careers and Skilled Trades Initiative came out of this Infrastructure and Jobs Asset Map. We wanted to create a framework for sort of creating those skills within the workforce. We did a public survey about a year ago on our websites, and we found that 75% of people feel that you need a bachelor's degree or above for a well-paying, secure, and fulfilling career. And compared to just 7% felt that you needed an associate's degree, and 18% felt that an apprenticeship of some sort would be valuable. So still, 75% of people think you need a bachelor's degree. Another question we asked was, so what do you feel the education system focuses on? And the vast majority of people felt that it focuses mainly on college access as opposed to STEM or encouraging interest in skilled trades or preparing students for career success. And lastly, a question on, would you encourage your children or family members to pursue a career in the skilled trades? To our surprise, we found that 70% said they would. So there's a mismatch somewhere. People recognize the value of skilled trades, but not necessarily for their family. And in some cases, they see the value, but they don't necessarily want, they still feel a bachelor's degree is necessary. So our focus today is really connecting education and economic development. We need to make sure that we can fill the skills gap, but also fill it with people who have the skills that employers are looking for. And so, you know, we know that to create a stronger economy, we need to have a stronger workforce. I mentioned before there were 80,000 job openings in Michigan. Also, about 25% of jobs are in healthcare, advanced manufacturing, and IT, technical areas. We also know that our sort of MEEP scores, for example, are showing that attainment in science and math is much lower than in reading. We need to sort of really prepare, focus on sort of increasing the ability to do well in these subjects in order to pursue education, further education, post-secondary education, or careers in technical fields. And we know that, on the one hand, employers have a role to play as well. They are the ones who are telling us that we're not getting people that we need. But there, we want to, you know, really make them part of the solution as well, making sure that they understand the value that they prove, that we need information from them on what skills they require, but also need their participation in advisory committees and industry groups so that, you know, we are developing collectively with education and employers and labor, the skills that we need in the workforce. And we also need to change perceptions of technical careers. So what we've done is at SEMCOG and MAC, we've developed a fourth-tier strategy. We want to redefine STEM, and we need, we have some policy recommendations. We've developed materials for raising awareness among students on the opportunities in technical fields, and we also have created materials for educators. So the first goal is to really address the perception issue. So as mentioned before, there's a, sometimes it's a negative perception of skilled trades, partly because they don't often require a four-year degree. However, one of the organizations I work with, the Partnership for Diversity and Opportunity in Transportation, they've coined, they've developed a website called My Road to Work, and it's mainly focused on construction work, but they've coined a phrase, apprenticeships, the other four-year degree. So like, we know that there's a value in education, it doesn't necessarily have to be totally only in the classroom. So the, so in order to change the perception, we're saying that skilled trades are applied STEM. STEM has value, STEM is important, and it's certainly an important part of the economy. But the skills that you need for, you know, education in science and technology, engineering, math are actually similar to the ones that you need for, to be an electrician or a carpenter. You need to have good math skills, you need to have problem-solving skills. So we want to make that connection. We've developed a series of policy recommendations that hopefully you as leaders will help us promote in terms of how do we increase student exposure to technical careers? How do we enhance the curriculum so that students can see where this education will lead to, what types of jobs it will lead to? We also want to sort of address the cost of education as part of our work. In terms of one particular area, meaningful exploration of career options, the education development plans, for example, there's opportunities to make that a much stronger tool for helping students go understand the opportunities in the, for the future, and looking at the different elements of sort of coming back to that education development plan so they can follow through with any changes and figuring out how to continue moving forward. And we also think that it's important to really create a more robust counseling system so that counselors actually can provide a broader range of information to students. In terms of curriculum connectivity, again, we want to respond to employer needs because they'll be hiring the students, but you know, there are other things that we can do like requiring career-focused education for all students, at least one class for graduation, and broaden the CTE model, education model. We feel that that, through its participation of employers and, you know, education and actual practical experience, provides a really good exposure for technical careers. In terms of raising awareness, we've looked, we've created several resources. This particular website, on the SEMCOG website, actually answers the questions that students have told us that they want to know in terms of choosing their careers. So this particular website has answers, resources that answer the question, how much does it pay? And what are the fastest-growing careers? How can I find out more about particular types of careers? And this resource hopefully will continue to be used widely. We also have created the Technical Career Continuum, which basically says that there are many routes to career success. College is definitely one of the routes, but we also want to encourage students who have an interest and aptitude for technical work to look at apprenticeships and also industry credentials. We start off by saying that post-secondary education is a substantial for technical education, technical career success, but there are different routes to the careers. And also, there are connections between the apprenticeships and the industry credentials and college. You can go back and forth. It's not like one route means that that's the only route you can follow. We also have several posters, we actually have six posters, the same poster, but basically different places so that it makes sense in every community, bits of information on technical career success. We also have an inventory of best practices, and CTE programs figure highly in there. But we also have programs where businesses are very active. The Beaumont Saturday Series exposes students to healthcare careers, and DTE's co-op program, similar. Do I get to go on? Couple minutes. So more information can be found on our website, and we hope that you'll see some value in the work that we've done. We've heard from our stakeholders and we wanted to share that information with you. But we hope that you, as policy leaders, will help us promote this issue.
Nahid and Bob, thank you so much. It's kind of an experiment for us that we're working through this for the first time.
I was thinking about how many staff meetings you might have had discussing this.
Well, we invented this after you left. Karen Toomey and Tom Pedroni, please join us up here.
Oh, I'm impressed with your pronunciation. You must know an Irishman.
And I was going to say, it's inherent in the genes here. But also, Michelle, maybe you'd like to preface some of this. I know this was one that you added to the agenda, so thank you.
I wasn't prepared to speak.
You don't need to.
Well, you know, as we know that there's going to be, there's a lot of discussion about what's happening in Detroit, and Tom, I know very well, he is one of the members of the union that I work at, and is very esteemed around these issues in education. So he's going to speak, and Karen, I'm just getting to know.
Sure, I can give a little background. So actually, I have a 20-year education career. It started in what we used to call Third World Communist China, where I taught a classroom of 48 sixth graders. And then I've since spent the last 15 years teaching in Bloomfield Health, which you would note is the highest-funded district and one of the top achieving districts. We also have an international baccalaureate program, which has afforded me wonderful opportunities to attend international conferences and really also welcome international educators to my classroom. And currently, I am serving on the Ferndale Board of Education, entering my second term. I, in that role, am not just an immediate neighbor to Detroit, but we also welcome in approximately 1,000 students from Detroit who had been underserved from the system there. And so this is very personal to me, and I am able to see the situation from several vantage points.
Thank you. Cassandra, I think you invited also, I apologize for that.
No, no, that's fine. I put Michelle on the spot.
Michelle, you did great. Please, Karen, Tom.
Well, and so just to say a little bit more about myself too, for those of you who may not know me as well. My name is Thomas Pedroni, and I'm an associate professor of curriculum studies at Wayne State University. And one of the things I'm so honored to do there is to be able to work with all of our teachers who are just beginning the pathway of progressing to be classroom teachers. I teach the entry-level course, and I coordinate the entry-level course that all of our teachers take. And I'm also newly the director of the Leonard Capital Educational Collaborative for Critical Urban Studies, which is a really good organization that's helping us bridge the work of the university as a public institution and the needs of the public, especially the parts of the public that have been the most educationally disenfranchised. So that makes us very interested in what's happening in Detroit, in a ring suburban Detroit, and many other areas of the state, Saginaw, and so on and so forth. So just really quickly, what we're presenting today is called Constructing an Evidence-Based Pathway Forward for Detroit Schools. And as Michelle alluded to, we have sort of been on tour a little bit the last few weeks. We know that there is a conversation right now happening around what should happen next for Detroit. And that conversation has included groups like the Coalition, which we'll speak about a bit later, offering its ideas, and a governor who said he's willing to listen and hear different ideas about what might happen and think about a way forward. But Karen Toomey, why don't you?
All right, so I'm really grateful to Mr. Landon, who already brought up sort of the elephant in the room, which is poverty. We do know that poverty is the biggest factor in academic achievement, and we've known that for 60 years. In fact, I was just with a group of other school board members and educational leaders in DC a couple of weeks ago, and I had a wonderful opportunity to sneak off to the Economic Policy Institute and have some conversations there. One of the things they shared with me was a report by the Superintendent's Roundtable, and it was entitled "The Iceberg Effect," which analyzed the policies of most of the nations in the EOC. And what it found was that we were uniquely, the only country to fall in the, they have sort of four categories, and we were the only one to fall in this fourth quadrant, which is that we are absolutely not aligned in our policy with the causes of the problems for what we're seeing in education. And so I just want to put that out, that as we are discussing governance models, that, you know, first and foremost, we do have to consider poverty. But given certain socioeconomic indicators, we are able to see that there are districts that beat the odds, as we say. And in most of those cases, what we have seen is that they are led by democratically-elected school boards. And there's some unique reasons for this, partially coming down to the fact that as elected members, we have accountability and transparency, just by virtue of Open Meetings Act, ethical codes, conflict of interest, and most uniquely is our civic capacity. We have a unique ability to build social capacity and political capacity. And I think if you look at that timeline in front of you, you can see that that was even well-evidenced in the city of Detroit. Just focus on the years between 1999 and 2006, and I think there's a pretty compelling argument that the democratically-elected school board was outperforming subsequent reform models.
Great. And so what I want to do is, first of all, just express my thanks that we have time to speak to you. We were also able to give our presentation to the Detroit Board of Education and spoke to the Coalition that I mentioned previously last week as well. So what we really want to do is be able to put another voice, or at least one more voice, into the discussions that are happening about which way reforms might go in Detroit. And we know usually we have Craig Ruff here to represent the governor. We intentionally loaded our slides full. We know we don't have time to show all of them in detail so that anyone who was not able to hear or wants to look back at it. able to hear or wants to look back at it later can take some time with those slides and, and see the overall arguments that we were making. So just to kind of cover some of the highlights right now, the way that I see it is that we have at least three important sectors in Detroit right now. And let's be honest, a lot, all of them are experiencing crisis to some degree, right? So we have, in the charter sector, we have a public that is a little bit more disenchanted than it might have been previously because of a lot of the reporting of scandal in Detroit-based charter schools and beyond Detroit as well. Scandal and also lackluster performance. In the, in the public schools, even though after six years of emergency management, we've been able to document that we are now below where we were in 2009 in terms of financial health, well below in terms of enrollment, and that we've lost further ground to the rest of the state. Our governor has appointed another emergency manager to Detroit. And in the Education Achievement Authority, rather than lift poorly performing public schools, what we've seen so far is that the EAA unfortunately has, and I've met with Veronica Conformey last week and it sounds like she's planning on doing things a little bit differently, but under other leadership's watch, really we see that the EAA has used kids to develop and promote for-profit software for a private vendor. So we see in all three sectors that there are significant problems and I think that there are different ways right now of outlining what those problems might be. So we have the group, which is called the Coalition, which was founded largely by the Skilman Foundation and Excellence Schools Detroit, and they logically have one way of defining the problem. And it's not a bad way of defining it. They talk about it in terms of fragmentation. So if you, this is actually borrowed from them and we're very thankful for the work they did in putting this together, but you really get the sense of how much fragmentation there is across the district. You can see the Detroit public schools sort of in the middle there. What I was especially surprised to see is that there are some charter authorizers who control more schools than the Education Achievement Authority does. Always, in my own mind, I've always thought of the EA as sort of the second, but it's really not in terms of numbers of students and numbers of schools. So if the problem were as simple as fragmentation, I think the kinds of solutions that are being forwarded are noteworthy, right? So the Coalition is talking about it'd be beneficial to have a single enrollment system so it'd be easier for parents as consumers to use the system so that they didn't have to choose between, you know, one app for charters, another app for DPS, another app for EAA. Coordinating the transportation system, maybe having a unitary system of evaluation and maybe even an authority that controlled opening and closing schools. But I think what we really have to ask each other is, is that really going to solve the problem? Is the fragmentation problem really the essence of the problem or are there other issues that underlie this? If we deal with the fragmentation, will there still be significant issues we need to face in Detroit public schools? And I think that as Karen said, an elephant in the room, of course, is poverty. And the reason to talk about that is not to say that there isn't a lot we can do in the context of poverty, but, because we can, but to say rather that if we have misdiagnosed the nature of the problem, we're likely to take solutions that are not very helpful. So the narrative that has been dominant and that I think animates a lot of the thinking behind the Coalition is that you have a situation where you had an inefficient public sector that as a result of its inefficiency in delivering good results in Detroit, had a lot of market competition that led to a system of fragmentation that now needs to be healed through some sort of market regulation. But there are very way, different ways of dealing with this, of reading the situation. One could say instead that what you really have is a situation where the crisis in Detroit public schools is largely an outcome of the socioeconomic crisis in which Detroit has been embedded for decades. And that actually, if one looked at the health of Detroit public schools before the first state intervention, that surprisingly there were good results. There was gradually increasing enrollment, there was a positive fund balance and scores on the state assessments were gradually gaining to the rest of the state. That's really remarkable when you think about the condition of the Detroit public schools, the condition of Detroit generally. So just really quickly, an alternative way of reading this, if we continue forward, would be to say, you know what, actually, the situation has been grossly exacerbated in Detroit public schools because of the imposition of state ownership, of state control, right? So we see beginning in about 2002, a district that had all of those gradually improving measures begin to decrease enrollment. The argument could be made that the district was made less competitive vis-à-vis charters because of its mismanagement under state control. The district was, went back to local control in 2006, but with a $200 million deficit, declining enrollment, a hard place to kind of pull the plane out as it's kind of diving down, right? And then since then, we have, and this is what I'll finish with real quickly, since 2009 and the new state takeover, we have this interesting phenomena where the district today starts to look much more like the charter school spending pie that you see on the bottom right there, whereas the other three pies here represent what traditional public schools do. Look at the bottom right where it talks about according to charter, the allocation to instruction and to administration by charter schools. This is where it is DPS fiscal year 2014 budget according to its CAFERS. Looks almost identical to that charter pie chart. Real quickly, and then I'll turn it back over to my colleague. Under emergency management since 2009, Detroit has, DPS has spent less and less on classroom instruction instead of bringing in efficiencies. It has spent more and more on general administration per student. It's seen an increase in the amount of debt service paid as a portion of the total general fund and as a segment of each child's per pupil spending. And it's seen an increasing decline in enrollment that when one factors in the EA shows that it really has not been making much progress in stemming enrollment, that we're still at a below 11% decline curve over the years. And most importantly, not that I think that standardized tests are the ultimate measure, but we see an increasing gap relative to the rest of the state. It's quite stark, as you see on this chart, especially if you can spend some more time on it later, especially in third, fourth, fifth, reading and math. It's amazing how much ground we've lost since Arne Duncan declared us ground zero.
So again, what we were trying to do is look at what makes a governance model effective. And so the key factor that we found is that you set an academic focus in your strategic planning and visioning process. And that's something that school boards are actually uniquely good at. We have wonderful organizations such as MESB who have the ability to help lead those processes. But something I found starkly noticeable when looking through the various strategic plans for the Detroit entities is how little focus there was on academics. When I looked at the one on the EAA, it was mainly a plan related to an online software. And this is given that we know, especially with recent articles in the New York Times, that the most effective online program only has about 20% success. I mean, think about that. And most are around 10%. So to put all your eggs in that basket, it's not following the research. And the same thing when looking at the plan in Detroit right now, which was to expire in 2017, it reads more like a marketing plan than an educational plan. Well, we first have to develop a strong academic plan before we market our product. So if you look at the roles of a school board, that's exactly what we do, is we first set a vision and then we align the organization to that vision. And the thing that I found so profound is that research has already gone through and shown us what the characteristics are of effective school boards. And so this is something that we can see being replicable through continued ongoing support and training of these boards. And again, there's many organizations out there that can do this. MESB does this. I know that Michigan Leadership Institute and several other organizations are capable of doing that. And so just looking at the visioning process here, you can see that we always centered on our core values. And being here in America and having the experience of coming from China, I know that one of our core values is democracy. And so I'd like to see it centered on that and bringing in that social capacity, the political capacity that school boards uniquely have to engage the businesses, to engage the organizations and other community leaders. Because what we're doing right now is not just trying to rebuild a school district, we're trying to rebuild a city. And that is something that a school board is uniquely positioned to, is to really get into those communities and develop the communities. And so I know that we're a little bit short on time, but this is another thing that was rather stark to me because as a school board member, we like to make sure that our budget is also aligned with the values of the organization. And so when I look at that pie chart, I can't understand how an instructional organization, an education organization is allocating less than half their budget to education, to instruction. So that's something that I would really look at. And that brings us back to that triangle of budgeting, where you first have to be building those really strong academic programs in order to be bringing in the enrollment, which gives you your revenue and affords you the expenditures. And I think that what we've seen is very one-sided plans. And so that is something that I think a school board would be able to do, given the proper training and support. And so I'll now bring us to our recommendations. If Tom would like to.
And we'll be real quick because we only have half a minute left. But we, what we want to propose and what we will be proposing in a white paper that we'll be distributing as well, we've been working on for some time, last few weeks, is to really emphasize the focus on academics, to focus on evidence-based practices. If there are good portfolio management models, then let's see the evidence that those things can be effective. And then one more recommendation?
I would like to recommend, of course, a restoration of local citizen control and point out that what we've been doing is we've really been holding the voter accountable instead of the elected official. So let's support the elected official and give rights back to the voter.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you. Each of the three today, this is a bit of an experiment for us, but it was all fascinating. And only, let me just, I think Tom and Karen, I just would like to say, I think this is a really excellent contribution to what needs to get us past the emergency manager strategy. And I think the timing's perfect. I'd like to suggest we get, there hasn't been an advisor appointed yet by the governor, but I think we could get the materials to that person when that happens. We're hoping that soon. But I think the timing is really good and, you know, we could debate whether it had an impact or not in the very beginning, but I think it's time to move past that and let's, let's just acknowledge that and appreciate your contribution. For others also, really appreciate the time you've taken and this is an opportunity maybe for the board to, we don't have a large discussion, we kind of fit this in today, but see what comments or thoughts you might have based on those three presentations today. So thank you all. Some of it was just to receive this too, by the way, so don't, don't feel like a lack of deep discussion is anything but listening. Yes, ma'am?
I had a question for Tom and Karen. You know, so you kind of alluded to the, a little bit about the portfolio management not being, having some questions about that and having those. Are there other places that you've tried this model and what is the results that you've seen there? Because I, you know, some people might be trying to hold that up, I'd like to get your opinion.
Well, so portfolio management models have been tried in a number of cases.
Come back up and use the mic, Tom. Come on. That way people in cyber world can hear you too.
That's true.
Okay, there's somebody on the phone too.
The five of them.
Right.
That's right. So one of the things that we found when we started to research portfolio management models is that there's, that portfolio management model is actually a very plastic and malleable concept and it really isn't one specific thing, right? So you can have, just to be really, not to get into it too much, but you could have a portfolio within a single school district. You could have a portfolio over three different districts. Most districts actually are portfolio models, right? Because they have some diverse offerings and they have some centralized aspects of what they produce. Detroit as a whole doesn't really have a portfolio management system right now, but it could re-centralize some tendencies. But to talk about the diversity, I guess one of the most important points is we've even learned there is no reason why a portfolio management model couldn't be governed by an elected board. In fact, we've heard that in Colorado, models like this exist as well. So one of the things that we proposed to the Coalition is that they put the Detroit Board of Education over the entire portfolio model. There are some cities that have been, to answer your question real directly and quickly, that have been experimenting with a particular type of portfolio management model over the last few years, notably New Orleans beginning the previous fall and Newark, New Jersey beginning this last fall. And there are a lot of hiccups, I mean, every new system has hiccups, but they're the kind of hiccups that groups really need to pay attention to. Sometimes what I worry about, what we worry about is that you have this management discourse that says, this is something good that's coming out of the discourse around business and management and therefore it must be good for schools and let's sort of just parade it around. And I think that's what's happening, right? And that's part of the call for evidence-based empirical solutions is let's, there is research around this stuff. Let's not just think about what's fashionable in business talk right now, let's actually look at what the evidence is. And it does ask us to provide some cautions.
And just to piggyback on that, I was actually just with a bunch of school board members from Louisiana two weekends ago and there wasn't one of them that had anything favorable to say. And they were actually walking me through much of the data manipulation that had occurred and the dishonesty, lack of transparency that had occurred and the ways that this model has been, what they, in their words, ruining their neighborhoods, so.
It's been what?
Ruining their neighborhoods. And that's in their words, not mine. So they were kind enough to invite me down there. I hope I'll find an opportunity to go and, and see firsthand and meet with them more closely, but I couldn't find people who had positive feedback. This is New Orleans you're talking about.
New Orleans, right.
Do the different people define portfolio management differently?
Yes, it's very malleable.
How was it, how were you, how are we, what are we talking about?
So the most common thread, it is very broad. The most common thread of a portfolio management model is that there are some diverse offerings within the system or within the sector and that there are some aspects that are centralized or re-centralized under some administrative body. So the anti-republic schools is a portfolio model because there are different choices, different types of schools, and there are functions like transportation enrollment that are centralized under the body, under one body. But you could also have, and you do have examples of portfolio management models in large cities with different sectors like Detroit, right? The common thread again is that you have some diversity of offerings within the portfolio and then you have some centralized aspects that draw that together, whether it's enrollment or evaluation or transportation.
So what is it like in New Orleans, Newark?
Well, just really briefly, the stories that you would find and you can read it in our white paper and you can also Google it, is there's been a lot of disruption, there's been a lot of hiccups, there have been a lot of people who have not gotten any of the schools that they've chosen. So the irony that they've pointed out is this is a system of choice with very little choice for most parents. And the idea of the neighborhoods being destroyed, it's really easy to sort of sketch out at a baseline what that looks like. The way that it happens is in a choice system, there is less in investment in the local neighborhood school. Neighborhood schools fall by the wayside and are potentially eventually closed. We know now from data that's been emerging over the last two years, from research that's been emerging, that when you close the local school, it has a tremendously negative effect on the surrounding neighborhood. So that's what I think the parents probably meant, or the officials meant about the destruction of neighborhoods. And I think we do see that in a lot of cities.
And just as an example, from a school board perspective, one of the things that was being shared with me was what happens when you have a centralized transportation system. On the surface, this sounds really great because you are offering choice wide scale, you can bus them anywhere, but all of that comes at a cost. So if I'm now going to be covering the entire district edge to edge, what does that do to transportation? So if you look at a typical budget, transportation's around 4%. Are you really willing to allow four more percent or even more to go towards transportation at the cost of instruction? What are our values? So that's why we always have to bring it back to that academic focus. What are our values and make sure that we are acting accordingly?
Thank you. And Raheli, oh, may I just say, this is a little bit selfish on my part, but I appreciated your starting out with my quote anyway, the complete quote for the first time, which is we're behind 10 years to leading states. We're actually above other comparable states. And when you take the very theme of today, the poverty is an issue. And we not only had poverty outpacing many other states, but we had a recession that beat them all during this 10-year period. So, you know, I was, I appreciate the full quote because the, the leading state issue is still an aspiration we have to have. We have to try to get like Massachusetts. We have some things to overcome because we have different kinds of poverty levels, as many of you have said. I think we're on our right, we're in the right course.
And Superintendent Flanagan, I'd like to, since you brought up Massachusetts, point out that they have a unique model where when a school district is in distress and a school board is having dysfunctional behaviors, rather than kick them out and lose that democratic control, what they do is they send in that support and the training and they've had astounding results.
Right. We, as a matter of fact, sent a team led by Natasha to Massachusetts to look at those very things and try to model it. That's exactly where we're headed.
Great.
Or where we would like to head. We said earlier today, if you were here for, or listened in on the earlier discussion, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different entities here. There's Republicans that control the House, the Senate and the governor's office. There's, in theory, because they work so well together, in theory, there's a democratically-controlled board. There's a department. How do you get all of these on the same page, heading in the right direction? And a specific example we used this morning is, we could all work towards what we believe, which is not automatic retention in third grade as an example, but if across the street they're not guided by us and encouraged by us to do the right thing, we could end up with automatic retention in third grade. And then with automatic retention in third grade, and then we, as a department, will implement that, and my daughter will be texting me right away, the teacher saying, "What the heck are you doing, Dad?" So, I mean, this is a fight together. It's one reason I challenged appropriately, because he's such a good thought leader on this, but Representative Stewart, to help us with the legislature across the street, on whether it's over-testing or some of these other initiatives, because that's really, rightfully, where most of the action is, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you look at it. Other board comments?
Yes, ma'am?
Well, I want to say that the three presentations were things that I personally like to hear. I like to hear solutions, I like to hear recommendations, I like to hear things that we can do together to make education what it's supposed to be. So, thank you for, to the three presentations for that very good information. Now, one thing that was said by Rojelio is that our population of Hispanic students is growing by leaps and bounds in this city, leaps and bounds in the whole state. And so, I would like to propose to the board and to the department, some kind of report in the future as to what we, as a department, are doing to enhance the educational opportunities to this growing population, which is called a Hispanic community in our state. And I think that three presentations that were given here today allude to that, but not in specific terms. So, I would like to see more information as to what we're doing as a state, and as a department, to prepare ourselves, because we are growing in numbers, and I'm telling you, we're going to grow in bigger numbers, even more than what we have now.
We'll do that.
So, thank you, thank you very much for those presentations.
Thank you all. Thank all three of you for the presentations today, I appreciate it very much.
I wanted to thank everybody, too. Especially, I wanted to thank SEBCO, because for many years, they had an education advisory committee, and I was on it for many years, and worked there for four years, too, 40 years ago, anyway. And one of the figures you had, I thought, was kind of interesting, in your survey, 75% of the people think a bachelor's degree or above is necessary now. Maybe, not even, even when you were here, Bob, there were surveys that showed 22% of the people thought a college education was important for their kids. So, if that, if that changed from 20-something percent to 70-something percent, that's a remarkable shift, and it should be able to influence our activities, and our attempts to raise the standards and everything, raise expectations.
I think it's a shift, and in a sense, it's kind of a good shift, but it's kind of like the pendulum. You know, it shifted, and, but there are all these jobs that are available, that, you know, you don't need a bachelor's degree for. And people now are, you know, so we need to kind of reshape history again, and, not reshape, but rework history, and come up with the balance. And parents need to know that if their kid's an electrician in Michigan, that kid probably has a job here, and that job's not going to get outsourced, and any number of other areas.
Yeah, and the 75% was bachelor's degree or above, that was the, is a public survey. We found that with the technical jobs, Brookings Report found that only 50% of STEM jobs requires a bachelor's degree. So, we really have to re-educate people about what the opportunities are. And we're not saying, "Don't do this," or "Don't go to college," or "Don't do apprenticeship." We're saying, there are many of opportunities, and we just have to raise the, raise awareness about the different options that are available in different careers with different education paths. And, but there is also that connection, that technical career continuum shows that they're all related as well. You can go from an apprenticeship and pick up industry credentials, and you can go to college as well. It's just the, I think it's part of the message is that there's, post-secondary education is essential for career success in most technical fields, but also that, you know, you can go to college, it doesn't have to be immediately after high school, if you decide that that's a different route for you.
Thank you.
Well, everybody does need a four-year college degree, maybe a two-year college.
And because of costs, we're seeing a lot more of that, too, by the way.
Yeah, and, you know, a lot of the apprenticeships, I know you get paid to go to school, and when you go to college, you don't get paid to go to college, as most people don't. But I, the, a couple of stumbling blocks I've had trying to get, you know, kids that maybe weren't interested in going to college, but were interested in the trades, you know, is the testing that's often required in order to even get an apprenticeship. And so, they've, and I even think some, some of the folks are using ACT, the trades are using, you know, they're using more and more standardized testing to get into the trade. And it tends to filter out some of the people that need those jobs, and so, there's, so is there any preparation, do you have any, you know, plans practical with those kinds of tests, whether it be for the trades, and then also picking the military, that ASVAP, you know, test, or to help get them in? And then, there's another obstacle of sort of knowing when, you know, once they get that trade, they have to oftentimes go to an employer on their own and deal with, you know, and sell themselves to get a job, you know what I mean? But at each, on each project, you know? And so, so that can also be a little more challenging for some...
Well, in the trades, that's a real issue. I mean, for example, and he talked about the bridge that's going to get built.
Right.
And there's a real challenge in finding people, but when you do find it, it's a project, you know? And once that project's done, then they've got, they're going to have to look for other jobs. That's, there's a trade-off, but on the other hand, the jobs are there, we know the jobs are there for the most part.
And just to answer your question a little bit about, there are several initiatives out there for pre-apprenticeship training, so really, getting the skills that you need to succeed in the apprenticeships. So, a program called Access for All, for example, is helping students who are looking at construction trades careers, and it's sort of a nine-week program, where you actually learn a lot of the basics of what you learn in apprenticeship programs. So, it sort of gives you a heads up in terms of, a leg up, in terms of getting into that position, being able to be successful. A lot of work now, now on apprenticeships, and registered apprenticeships particularly, I know the MEDEC is working on this issue, and several of the workforce development agencies are helping to raise awareness about opportunities in apprenticeships, and looking at sort of how you can get into them. The operating engineers, for example, is one group that's really encouraging student, people to look at the pre-apprenticeship program and then go into apprenticeships. So, yeah, but you do, I mean, these are, these are still technical skills, technical jobs, and you do need a good level of math, you do need to understand science and problem-solving in order to be successful. So, I think part of what we're saying is, through the career development model, or the education development model, you're able to learn what your aptitudes are, what your skills are, and then reassess those as you go through the high school curriculum, and then figure out where your strengths are and how to build on those, so that you're in the right classes to get the skills for your future career.
Thank you. And then Pam, and then we're going to move on to our teacher recognition of Michelle Anderson, who I know they have a timeline issue.
Nahit, I just had a question for you, Nahit. I think you threw out a number for jobs that, or a projection of jobs that are going to be available or are available, and I didn't see it in the PowerPoint.
It's eight, right now, mytalent.org website, this MEDEC's website for jobs, is 80,000.
Eight, eight zero?
Eight zero thousand.
Eight zero?
Yeah, there are jobs available in the state right now. Not all of them are technical.
Are they really there?
Yeah, there are postings, they're based on postings on the mytalent.org website.
One of the other observations, yesterday, I was listening to Michigan Public Radio, and I think it was Mike Johnston from the Michigan Manufacturer Association, was talking about the 3Ds, it was like dirty, dark, dark, dirty or something, where they're looking to change the perception of manufacturing or that industry, and it was just an intriguing story, especially from an engineer who hates smells.
Yeah. And the Macomb County, Macomb ISD, in October, last October, they held National Manufacturing Day, where they took 1,200 students from the high schools into about 30 industrial facilities, and they just saw how clean and how modern these are. So, part of the challenge is to raise awareness and perceptions of the careers in industrial facilities and manufacturing.
Thanks, Pam, for calling attention to that. By the way, anyone who hasn't seen these clean factories, just go down to the Cadillac plant down the street here, it's just amazing, and it would change the whole mindset of kids who think it's somehow beneath them. It's not your mother's or father's old mobile, whatever that expression might be. Well, thank you again, the three of you, this has been very helpful, and can I maybe just singularly, for a moment, invite Michelle Anderson to the table, because I want to read some comments, and then we'll have other guests that are with her. And this is by way of introduction, but please have a seat first, so I can read this with you here. Thanks for coming, Michelle, and the whole team, which I think you'll have a chance to introduce in a moment. Let's just, this is a highlight of our day, and appreciate the opportunity to recognize your award. Michelle Anderson was recently selected as the 2014 National History Teacher of the Year by the Gilder Lehman Institute of American History. First person in Michigan. And Michelle's a teacher at John Glenn High School in Wayne Westland Community Schools, where I stole the principal years ago, to go to Farmington, by the way, the other Michelle. She's an outstanding teacher, a member of the School Leadership Steering Committee and Social Studies Department Chair. In 2013, Michelle won $6,545 as a project grant from the Michigan Humanities Society for a John Glenn Oral History Project and Community World War II USO Dance. The innovative, creative, one-of-a-kind high school project included our students doing an oral history activity in which they interviewed and videotaped WW2 veterans, like my dad, to be honored by the entire community. Thank you for that. And these oral histories were submitted to the Library of Congress. The World War II USO Reenactment Dance celebrated the 68th anniversary of the victory in Europe. Over 600 community veterans and families attended. She received the Michigan Historical Commission's John B. Swenson Award for this project, and in 2014, she completed a Korean War Oral History and USO Dance Project as a sequel. This is like movies now, we're going to have to a similar World War II era project, and currently, she's planning the Vietnam era project, my team. So, Ms. Anderson has done extensive curriculum work with MDE. She's been a productive member of the History Curriculum and Assessment Alignment Project, the History Test Item Review Committee, and the History Teacher Certification Frameworks Committee. Can we stand and please honor Michelle Anderson? And would you like to make some comments, and maybe introduce your team, Michelle?
Okay. I have with me today my mentor from when I first started teaching at John Glenn, and he is now the president of our school board, the Wayne Westland School Board. This is Tom Buckle. And then I have my superintendent, Dr. Harmalov. And then I also have my principal, who has supported this project from the very beginning, and I don't have to say to you about how challenging sometimes it is to fit new curriculum in. We're very pressured on things, and he could easily have said no to this project, and instead, he has done nothing but found ways to support it. So, this is David Ingram.
First of all, thanks for everything you've done, including the help here at Michigan at the department. I think sometimes when we hear about these committees, a name and a face, and the kind of prestige they bring to our committees, is probably an important opportunity to present also. But I want to, I want to present you with, on behalf of the board and the team, the Michigan State Board of Education congratulates Michelle Anderson in your National History Teacher of the Year awarded. So, thanks so much for your dedication.
Thank you so much.
Would you like to make some comments?
Yeah, I thought I don't have these ideas. I've been teaching for 21 years, and I'm just very fortunate to have the opportunity to be in front of my students. You know, ultimately, that's what it comes down to, is being with our kids, and this has been a great way to connect the community with the students. It's been a win-win situation. The veterans have made so many comments about, wow, I didn't think that they cared, I've learned so much from the students, who they, you know, the older generation seems to have this idea in their head that we have these, you know, just rowdy students, and, you know, they're out of control, and then they meet them, and, you know, I continuously get nothing but kind remarks from them. And one of our Berlin Aerolift veterans that we interviewed actually contacted me and said, "You know what? I have renewed faith in the future." So, and the students have enjoyed this, I've had many of them who, as history students, have came back to sociology, want to continue the project, and they always ask me, "When's our next dance?" So, the word is getting out, we're joining two generations together to make them understand each other, and history, all Americans will be able to benefit from watching these interviews in the Library of Congress, so.
Thank you so much, Michelle.
Thank you.
Michelle's team, and Representative Stewart, would you come up for some pictures, so we can get some of you, please?
As long as you'll send one back to the district. Send one back.
We'll send one back, Michelle, let me take it on yours.
Thanks.
Channel 7 Action News did a spot, came out yesterday, and interviewed students, so Google Channel 7, look for Michelle Anderson, and you'll hear the students tell all about her.
Well, I'm so delighted to have someone here who's a history teacher. We put so much emphasis on STEM, I'm glad John added the arts. How about making it steams for social studies at the end? We need it, and I've been saying, we have to do a better job of making social studies and history more exciting to the kids, and you're doing it. So, that's a great model, and they could do that in every community, and it would be terrific. But that's, it's so important that we, that we learn our history, not only our history, but the history of the world, I mean, what's going on in the world today, we don't know anything about all these countries and their history, and why they act the way they do, and so, there's so much for us to know, and kids have to know so much more now. People, when they grow up, they're going to have even worse problems than what we do in the United States. So, it's so good to emphasize social studies, congratulations.
You are invited. Please kindly mark your calendars for April 29. I can personally identify with this, the 50th anniversary of Vietnam at John Glenn High School, and I attended the one a couple of years ago for World War II vets. There were well over 600 people in the high school cafeteria that night.
April 29.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well, that's always fun, to see, like, real people that are doing, doing it with our kids every day, so. We have a lot more interesting stuff, you don't have to run away, I mean, this is really... I mean, like, right now, we're getting to approval of the minutes, which, which Bert's worked so hard on. So, with that in mind, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and committee of the hall meetings of January 13.
So, move.
Moved by Kathleen, supported by Cassandra. Any discussion? Hold favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you. John did his report. This is the beginning of my report here, and I think you, if you haven't seen this, you will soon, but it was in the spirit of trying to thank teachers, including my daughter.
Here.
Mike, before we leave, you have to look at a video montage of all of our kids, like an hour.
Right, and pets.
The world, what they love about teaching, I know that I will. And here's a short video from Gary, that's, he's provided to show us how to do that. And this is what I'm going to give to my favorite teacher, my daughter. Look at that hashtag, and there's more to that podcast, but we didn't want to bore you with the whole thing.
I loved it.
Thank you. Okay. We're doing it together with the national group, and Gary Aboud helped us think this through.
Gary put that together.
But I sent a podcast yesterday, and get a chance to watch it. It gives a little more complete aspect of that. Caught me eating some chocolate in it, but other than that.
It's really fun. It's really fun.
So did I mention that I've been at over 400 board meetings as a superintendent? I don't know if I happened to mention that or not. Grand Valley tonight. In the spirit of time here, I, a couple of things, I guess I would say. One is just culture of reading. We got some really beautiful letters from kids that benefited from this. This is kind of for us to highlight, because sometimes what happens, I've said this to some of the folks that are looking at this position, that you're more removed than you want to be, but try to get to schools as often as you can, and if you can touch lives in some ways, it always certainly helps. And then I think I'll just move it right into, with this particular picture, which I think will lead us right into another highlight of the meeting usually, which is with Melody, our Teacher of the Year. But this was actually, at her surprise, I know we saw a video of it, but I don't know if you actually caught this. Who would that be, Michelle?
That would be my mom. And then my sister, and my niece, and my nephew, and my dad in the background, along with 40 other family members and friends that were there.
And this is the time, I might have described it at the time, but I said, well, why don't you come on up and join us, not knowing there were like 100 people coming through the line there. But it was really a wonderful, a wonderful day. I'll let you get a shot of that, and then we'll turn it over to you for your report.
Thanks.
Thank you. So I was just thinking about today, that this year's gone by so fast, and it's really only a few more months that I'll be in this role, so I'm just trying to enjoy every moment. I've mentioned a few times that I'm really interested in classroom design and thinking about, you know, what I call 21st century classroom environment. However, somebody pointed out to me that any student that is a freshman or younger has been born into the 21st century, and that's just the way that they learn. And so they felt that that term was outdated, and I agree. So I'm just about rethinking classroom design, making classrooms more realistic, more comfortable, more inviting, and getting rid of desks. So recently, myself and my two colleagues went to visit Erin Klein's classroom. She's a teacher at Cranbrook, and she's also an award-winning blogger with about 20,000 or 30,000 followers on Twitter, and she travels around the country. So that was a great, a great chance to see her classroom, and I've become friends with her through a Michigan Educator Voice Fellowship, and she's fantastic. So we were thrilled to do that. Our district, Wald Lake, puts on an annual Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. This is at Northern High School, and you can see from the picture on the bottom that we have hundreds of guests, and it's a way to celebrate diversity and highlight students in different groups. So our community service group, called Keith Carrion Community Club, or otherwise known as KC3, was there to volunteer their time and their services, and they helped to set up and helped man my school's station, and then also helped to serve dinner and to clean I visited Harper Woods Elementary Schools to do a workshop, and there were two schools involved, which were Beacon Elementary and Tyrone Elementary. And I had done a presentation on math facts and differentiating that and using a system that I developed at the Advanced Ed Conference, and one of the teachers who was there invited me to share this with their 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade teachers and support staff. So that was a great chance to interact with teachers in Harper Woods. You have indulged me in being able to share my book almost every month, and it is finally a real, you know, living thing after eight years. So we were able to kick off and launch the book through a series of author visits. This is at my own school, where we did visits for every single grade level. And on the right is my illustrator, and also Keith Elementary's art teacher, and this year's Teacher of the Year for our school. So we had an amazing time with the students, and it was so well-received. And now we are doing author visits all around the state, and specifically in March, since it's Reading Month. And I'm excited to share this message with students everywhere. This book and this day, this author visit, was highlighted in several newspapers, including the Detroit Free Press, the Oakland Press, the Spinal Column, the Westmont Field Beacon, and a few others. So we've had a great response. Oh, I should say, I do have a copy of this for each of you, and I'll share those with you after I'm finished. And I did have them in order of the way you sit, so I thought that'd be easy to pass out. When I came today and you had it switched all around, so that might take a little longer than I expected. But as Superintendent Flanagan mentioned, that same week, actually the same day, I found out I was a finalist for Oakland County's Elite 40 Under 40, which is a program initiative started by L. Brooks Patterson, to help identify people in that age group that are making a difference and finding ways to keep them in Oakland County, because they realized at some point that that's the age group that was leaving. So I had been nominated by my friend Vanessa Denhard-Garmo, who is an editor of the CalDian News and has a communications company. And when I applied for it, after being nominated, I thought that there was just a class of 40. I didn't even realize that they did finalists, so this was a nice surprise. I got to go meet with L. Brooks Patterson, along with the other two finalists, Luke Fleer and Andrew Shimmeluski, both outstanding men with great initiatives and great role models for people in Oakland County. What they did was they opened it up to a public vote, and now looking back, I think I had an unfair advantage, maybe, because with the, between the Wald Lake community and the CalDian community and the community of teachers and the network that, you know, has kind of created this year. There could have been an unfair advantage there. But I did, as Kathleen mentioned, say, I did win. And part of that prize is to introduce L. Brooks Patterson at the State of the County event. So that was Wednesday last week, and that's a totally different crowd than I'm used to speaking to. Lots of county executives and officials and several family members, as I'm sure you're going to think of or imagine. And that was a great opportunity to kind of highlight why Oakland County is a great place to live and, you know, why I started my family's roots there as well. So that's my principal, Phil Pittman on the right, and my superintendent, Ken Gutman, also attended. Just this past weekend, I was in Grand Rapids for the Nova Now Conference, and that is held at Kent Innovation High School, which is a really unique high school with very much the classroom design that I'm looking towards. And it was teacher-led, it was conversation-based, so it really wasn't just somebody standing and presenting during the session. It was a facilitator posing questions and engaging teachers in an important dialogue. They also had their own students who attended and gave a student voice. So it was an outstanding experience and something I hope to continue next year. In this particular session, this is David Tooney, who is a high school teacher in Grand Rapids and also an author of a book called Elevate Empathy, which is about bullying and bully prevention. So this was my favorite part of the entire conference, and really just trying to share his message that we need to change the conversation from anti-bullying to pro-empathy, which is so important. So he and I are actually teaming up, because he has the high school perspective, and I like to share the elementary perspective, and we'd like to bring that together. Just yesterday, I had the chance to speak with Cynthia Canty for an interview on stateside, which aired at 3:00 and 10:00 p.m. And of course, it was about bullying, and really just the message that I'm trying to share, which is to break the bully stereotype and help kids see that even the nicest, smartest kids act like bullies sometimes, and it's the same for adults as well. Really just to think about their, the impact that their words have on others, and to see that within themselves and make a change. My latest blog follows that same theme. I just published it yesterday, and it is titled Nice Kids Are Mean. And that's an interesting title, but it really does kind of hold to the essence of the book and the message within it. I would also like to address the Love Teaching Campaign. This is something that was started by Gary Aboud, who's the 2014 Michigan Teacher of the Year, along with Sean McCombe, who is the current National Teacher of the Year and a wonderful advocate for teachers. And then Tom Radamacher, who is a Teacher of the Year in this cohort with me, and I'll meet him next week in Phoenix. But they just started talking about the negative culture around the teaching profession and how even teachers are out there, you know, telling people to go into a different field or talking about why they're so frustrated, and they really wanted to change that and flip the script. So they started the Love Teaching Campaign, and as Superintendent Flanagan mentioned, it's about sharing your love for this profession, why it's important, what it means to you, so we can turn it into a positive one. And I really enjoyed your podcast, where you were enjoying some chocolates and then leading into that message. So we appreciate your support, and I have been spreading the message with all of the teaching groups that I've been part of this year. And it's not just for teachers, so you are welcome to join in by telling why you love a teacher or why you love this profession and why it's so important. So we're thrilled with that. And with that, I'll just share these, and then that's almost it.
You know, the hashtag Love Teaching, I think it, I really appreciate your leadership, Gary's on this. I think what can happen is, I'm guilty of this myself, you can get into a cloud of woe is me, and before you know it, you actually have the opportunity to make a difference and not accidentally discourage people from getting into the profession, to get to your point, Melody. And that's, it's been tough in this state for 10 years. It's getting a lot better. And I just think the more we can focus on the positive, as you guys have led us, that's going to be really the answer ultimately. You know, I had to read, I read in the New York Times last Sunday, something about, well, why don't we, they meant the United States, just do what Finland does, which is only take people from the top 10% of the class. First of all, a lot of good teachers come from not the top 10% of the class, and they know how to work with kids, and they can learn. But even having said that, I thought, teachers select us, we don't select them. So we have to make this something that they value, and there is a cultural issue, where if in Finland, that's kind of the number-one profession that people hold in high esteem, kind of like professors here. I think professors, there's a little bit, Tom may be still out there, but I think professors get almost, you know, they automatically get esteem, and teachers, to some degree, automatically don't. And I don't know what that's all about. They're so closely aligned in so many ways, but it's heavy left, and this is certainly going to make a difference in it. Yes, ma'am?
It's so important, Mike, because it's not only, teachers have to love teaching, but people have to love the teachers. And with the, with the hacks of the teachers that have been prevalent for quite a few years now, and the criticisms and the blame put on both bad teachers, unquote, it's just, it's disneying, because many young people don't want to enter the teaching profession now. And what I've heard is that the applications to colleges of education has dropped dramatically across the board, not just at one, like several of the colleges, unquote. They've said the same thing, that their applications are way down.
Right.
And that's just, I think it's a natural reaction to people who thought it was a good profession, but it's been so criticized, it's so demeaned, that it's, we're going to lose the top 10%, everyone going to want to go into it.
Right.
Much less than 20%, whatever.
Exactly. I think that's why the hashtag Love Teaching can help reverse that. And I think even the presentations or halos today, the Toms, Pedroni, it helps people understand, there may be issues with the system, it's not the people in the system. There probably are issues with system reform that we have to think about, and where we've gone too far and where we have to come back, but it's almost never the people in it. I mean, they're doing the best they can, and I get texts, you know, you've heard me joke about it, but it's true. I mean, I'll get a text after a law's passed that I have nothing to do with, and my daughter will be texting me from the classroom, what the heck did you do? And, you know, it's hard not to be a bit defensive, but there's a point where it is demoralizing if it feels to them like a criticism of them. Whoa, we're not good. And I'll just say this, even as state superintendent, I feel that once in a while. You know, I appreciated the opportunity to reframe the 10-year-behind issue, because I've been hanging on that for a couple of months, as if I really think we failed. I don't think we failed. I think we've had challenges that Massachusetts doesn't have, and I probably didn't frame that as well as I could have for the interview. Yes, sir?
I think this is a prime illustration of the fact that ideas have consequences. Now, ever since I've come on the board, I've heard it proclaimed many times that the most important factor in child's learning is a teacher. And if you believe that, and you're not happy with your child's school experience, that implies where the responsibility lies. So I think sometimes, sometimes we rely on simple, well, teaching and learning is a complex set of activities, and when we reduce it down to one or two things, that's kind of my reservation with going to the ABC system of grading schools, then you have too simple an answer to a complex problem. Another example where ideas have consequences is, I've heard a lot of call for change. You know, teaching is not going to be like it used to be. Well, if I don't know what it's going to be like, then I'm going to hesitate to go in, you know? And I think that's also what you hear from teachers who are mystified by the directions or changing expectations or other things like that. They're the ones who speak out of that frustration, and instead of saying, you know, you should follow, you know, you should follow my example, you should, you know, get out while the going is, get out and not make the same frustration that I'm facing now. A third one is just demographics. Michigan's lost population. Southeast Michigan's lost a lot of population. Was disappointed that that wasn't acknowledged. In the history of the Detroit Public Schools, the financial aspect of Detroit Public Schools is all there in the census figures. And that, too, makes the lives of beginning teachers uncertain, and there's always a cost to, there's a cost to change, whether that change is chosen or caused by factors outside of our control. So I think, I think a lot of this does play into it.
Yes, Melody? We're still on your item, so.
Another topic I'm so passionate about. But I've been fortunate to be able to speak to teachers all across the state this year and even around the country, which is one of my favorite parts of this role. And I really hear what they're saying loud and clear, and it mirrors what I feel. Teachers feel very isolated and kind of limited by the walls of their classroom, and what they want more than anything is to be seen as leaders and to be seen as the experts that they are, and to, you know, be asked for input and to have more of a voice in the policy and in the system overall. So I think that once you do that, you make the teachers feel valued, and then you elevate the entire profession. So I think that's a really big piece that I hope those who can make those changes will hear and respond to.
I'd like to second that, too. You know, and so much of the change that has happened in the legislature and in the federal government has been with the exclusion of teachers and exclusion of them at the table. And that's why I think we've ended up with so many policies that are failures, because it's... it's, I mean, this idea that it's, the central point is that if it's, if a child is failing, or if a child goes to prison, or if a child, it's the teacher's fault, that the teacher is the number one. But that's not even what the study that's quoted is saying. They said the number-one determinant is their community and economic condition. That's the number, not the teacher. But, so why don't we attack poverty instead of attacking teachers? I mean, it's like, it, it, but I, I, you know, I agree. I think teachers should be at the table, whether it be when we talk about having stakeholders come to a high-priority school, whether it be including a policy. If it's going to be school policy, you know, they should be there. So should school board members, so should superintendents, so should principals, so should, you know, they should all be there, not just people who have nothing to do with education determining what the, anyway, sorry, I just feel indulged in the ramble.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me say this. Melanie said something, the people that can make a difference in the, in the educational field, or in the teacher's life, it can start with all of us in this room today. Yesterday, I want to go to Amelia's Valentine party Thursday. Oh, she's counting the date, she's so excited, she's a kindergartner. So I, I wrote to the, the teacher that I was going to be able to go, and I thanked her for the work that she's doing with the little kindergarteners, that Amelia is so excited. Right away, she wrote me back, oh, thank you so much. So all of us in this room are those agents of change. Don't leave it to the legislators, don't leave it to the president, don't leave it. It starts with us, right here in this room, us sitting right here. Choose a teacher, a few teachers, and, and write to them today. Call them, whatever you, Valentine's coming up, send them a little kiss, right? A little kiss, anything, because we have to show the teachers that the public appreciates what they're doing every day. And having taught and being a principal for 36 and a half years, I want to tell you, teaching and a principalship is the most difficult job in the whole wide world, because you're changing and creating thoughts there that are going to produce a person forever. And so, the challenge is ours.
Thank you, that's, that's great advice, to lead by example. Well, thank you all, that was a nice spontaneous discussion. Well, we're going right to state and federal legislative report. I think I saw Marty came back from taking off for lunch somewhere else, because he didn't want to be bothered with us. Saw Ben tempting him to get their coat on and leave. Sure. No, actually, they involved in something I could make today, because of the meeting, so they filled in for me.
They're busy, they're busy.
I'm trying to make this quick. February 2nd, there was a meeting of the, the board's legislative committee meeting. Several issues were discussed, including the May ballot proposal for transportation and education, and adequacy study that's required in law, that's really in the House of, Department of Treasury, I'm sorry, Technology Management and Budget is in charge of that. Department of Education has no role in that study whatsoever. Also, the discussion of inviting legislators over to have lunch with the board, and a couple dates were discussed, and I don't know if the board has, wants to just go over that or not at, at this point. Both the House and Senate Education Committees have been meeting, no bills have really been moved to date, so they're just kind of in the reorganization and beginning processes of the session. As far as on the federal level, legislation to reauthorize the federal ESEA No Child Left Behind law has been introduced in both houses of Congress. In the Senate, Chairman Lamar Alexander and Senator Patty Murray, Republican/ Democrat, released a joint statement last week, saying that they've agreed to move forward to develop a bipartisan chairman's markup to fix NCLB, so that was positive news, it sounds good. The quote in their statement is, "We know our constituents expect us to fix this broken law and improve education for students, families, and communities across the country, and we expect to succeed." On the House side, at the federal level, Chairman John Klein introduced his reauthorization bill last week, a bill that nearly is identical to one passed by the House on a party-line vote back in 2013, but did not obviously make it into, or make it to the President, and it carries the same name, it's called the Student Success Act. So they'd be going from No Child Left Behind to what would be called the Student Success Act. Representative Klein is also scheduled to mark up for the bill tomorrow. House leadership has already scheduled floor time to debate the bill the week of February 23rd, to look for the legislation to be marked up and dispensed within the House, all within the month of February. So these are moving pretty quickly in Washington, but again, there's House and Senate versions of both those. Governor Snyder will be presenting his 2016 budget tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., and when the details are released publicly, I will forward them to the board members. I would expect that his budget will reflect the priorities that he announced in his State of the State address. So that's really, that's what I have to report. I'm not sure, Cassandra, do you want to discuss anything?
The only thing that I, I would add to that is, for that adequacy study, there is an RFP that's being drafted, and the Legislative Committee did ask the department to reach out to the Department of Technology Management and Budget to offer assistance with the drafting of the RFP, because we, we believe that if you're going to have a, a study that looks at education, funding, and adequacy, that having educators, or those who represent educators, be involved in the process is important. So that's, that's the only thing that I would add to that report.
We'll do that. We'll do that, and I think we'll have a positive result from that. I would say this, the risk of to direct a talk, I do think, the reason I wanted to emphasize, how do I want to say this, I think this is the reason, if the perception is, and it's wrong, by the way, I've seen nothing but this board working together, Republicans and Democrats, since I've been here. If the perception across the street is that that's not the case, then we can end up in a situation where we're not giving, given what seems like an obvious to us. To us, it would have been, why wouldn't this be given to the Department of Ed? And I don't know, I can't get inside their heads, and I'm, I don't have any personal kind of knowledge about this, but I think those things have implications, and there may be fear to give it to us, that we would, that we would try to push it in one direction or the other. That's all unfounded. It, it upsets me to the degree that I, we try to convince, I would say, leaders over there as recently as last week, that don't be concerned about that. But I think it's just something to be mindful of. So whenever we can continue to show what we've shown, which is working together, Democrats with Republicans on the board, then we're more likely to get assigned those kinds of things. And I think, I don't know this, but I think that had a factor on why it was assigned to DTMB instead of us. And unfairly, but anything we can do to help that, I think that's why I wanted to emphasize this morning, I think Lupe's comments last meeting, I repeated over and over again to some of the leaders this week, and many of you have made those same comments, by the way, this just happened to be the most recent one, because otherwise, there's an image that, you know, it's a Democratic-led board, and they're going to try to move it in a certain direction. We would do a fair study, obviously. So I think our next best opportunity is to impact the RFP, as Cassandra's saying, and I hope we can do that. But I didn't want to not be direct about why I think it might not have been assigned here. There is something to be said that DTMB would have always been involved to some degree, because their procurement, but it would have been nice if it was kind of a partnership enlisted that way. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to add a little to Marty's report on what's happening with ESEA, because I was on this conference call yesterday with the Government Affairs Committee of NASB, and one was, they talked a little bit about what the, what the President's budget wants, too, and one of the things, there's no, there's no request to the President's budget for anything, any money for Race to the Top. That's how we finished, so that, that was interesting, I thought. And in the, I learned a lot, the same things you, you said already, but one of the things that I thought was interesting, that in all the things that they, they want to change, and they, as I said earlier, Chairman Alexander is thinking about whether he wants to maintain every-year testing, he's not sure about that yet, but one of the things they all have agreed on, the Democrats and Republicans, is the continued disaggregation of data. That will be a continuing requirement, which I think is probably a good thing. That was one of the, and the other thing in the, they don't, they don't plan to tie any dollars to evaluation of teachers or administrators. That seems, that's not in the cards at the moment. So that's, I think, a good thing, too.
Kathy, can I, or whoever, so, well, we still have the state legislation.
We still have the state legislation, but at the federal level, that, because, because the feds were demanding some of that, too.
Right.
They're, they're apparently not asking for that anymore. At least, they're not asking for whether the Congress would put it in, but I doubt it.
What do states do when they're kind of stuck?
States do it on their own, they don't need to. But anyway, that started with, with that.
Mm-hmm.
So those were a couple of things that are a little bit, a little bit just different for the conditions.
Yeah, a little more detail, thank you.
I think that was it.
Other, Pam?
Mine was, and I spoke with Cassandra about this a little bit, but how far will the adequacy study go without the road fixed, without the, the tax moving forward?
Well, the adequacy study, if I recall, the language is written just to do the study, to kind of determine what the needs of education are. There's no presumption. In fact, I think with the signing of the bill, the governor had attached a letter to that, saying that, you know, this is a study, and basically, you know, there are no expectations, no presumptions beyond that.
Okay, so the study will be done within a year, regardless of where we?
Right.
Okay.
No.
But the, the other thing it said was, there was no appropriation in the bill.
Right.
So how's it going to get paid? Are they going to say, how are they going to put a RFP, is no money figured in that?
Not yet. Maybe tomorrow, when he, when he shares his budget, there will be money attached, money involved in that.
And I understand tomorrow, he's also going to try to dovetail with the cuts we may have to make yet this day. Is that what you've heard?
Yep.
I mean, I mean, this year, rather, in all the departments.
Right, because there's a, there's a $456 million hole, I think, in general fund, and so I, I understand that he'll be doing either executive orders, or transfers, negative transfers, as part of the announcement tomorrow also, to, you know, to address that budget hole for fiscal year '15, which is what we're in now, and then also announce the budget, his budget plan for 2016 and '17.
And I say that because I think it is good, I appreciate that he and his team are, are trying to leave education harmless, and then also in the new budget, give it hopefully good boosts. Having said that, we're education also, and we're going to get cut. You know, I mean, it just, it's under the radar, other than at a table like this, and I get it, you know, people in the field have their own problems, but I don't want to not go on record that obviously, we're going to have some tough decisions to make here, based on that, and we'll, we'll do so.
I, I had a.
Yes, ma'am.
I had a question with regard to the special ed revisions, and, you know, with, I know there's a lot of turmoil around Cali's role, and, and then the JPEG, not.
JCAR.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
It's a picture.
The picture of it.
It's a big picture.
Yeah, JPEG, yeah. JCAR, not, you know, approving it last year. So I'm told that there is recommendations that are coming from the Department of Special Education to you, and that you will be making a decision about next steps. So my question is, and I'm told that the recommendations have been sent to you, and I was just curious, what, what is the status of that? What do you think will be happening with that?
I guess, to be blunt, I'm disappointed that the Lieutenant Governor did what he did. It caught us off guard, it was last minute, we worked through this for two years, our department's staff have been overwhelmed with the workload on that. Anyone who gave this a fair look, and I know you did, by the way, I appreciate the board taking the time to understand this, and I understand even more so that you were good enough to have some conversations at CAC, Michelle, and other places. So it's very disappointing. I mean, this is, our guys are probably demoralized to some degree, and I've talked to them and their leaders and said, it is what it is, you know, it's the way the process works. I think it unfortunately gained a lot of steam, as if a lot more was happening because of rule changes than really was. I mean, it even got into, as you know, and we had our discussion here, it even got into some issues that are federal issues, that we, that have nothing to do with the rule changes here, that probably should be changed at the federal level, but it's not, it's not because of what happened here. I mean, I honestly, I'm, you know, I'm reluctant to send them over if I think they're just going to be undermined. Undermined's a strong word. I don't attribute malice to this, I don't want to go too far in that, but it's disappointing, and that's kind of, we've been discussing this back and forth. I mean, I could send them over, I think they would just sit, but that's, I'm reluctant to, but I don't know, any thoughts?
My, my thoughts are, you know, I've come to the conclusion that the special ed regulations are really difficult, and a lot of people do not understand them. I've got a very general knowledge, but I, they're really intricate, and there's a lot of, so a lot of this is distrust and relying on different people's perspectives. So I think. And I think Eileen had talked about it, too. So when the changes come, to make it clear, and I know it's more work up front, but like, these are the changes, this is, you know, this is what it was, this is what we're changing it to, and this is why. And, and to have that information, like, really label, put out there in a way that's really clear and understandable. And I know the CAC group spent a lot of time deliberating, I talked to a lot of people.
They're very disappointing.
Yeah, yeah, and, but as I said, then, like, nobody, it, it needs to come out to the community, and even though this, you know, CAC is a group of really highly respected and very knowledgeable, and, you know, advocates for special education, the at-large community, they weren't, they need to be more involved. And I think that was part of the reason why there was this big turnout at JCAR, I think this is the why, because even though CAC was involved, and maybe some ISD, you know, special ed boards were involved, advisory boards, really, I think it needs to be really communicated clearly what the changes are, and the motivation for it. And I don't know if it's like a fiscal agency that does sort of like a neutral, both sides kind of thing. It should be Michigan Protection Advocacy that weighs in on an opinion, who I think is a respected advocate for children.
The thing that, I'm sorry, these are, those are good points, I mean.
Yeah, but that would, that would kind of re, get rid of the cloud of distrust, and, you know, and would have a more informed debate.
The thing that, I think those are fair comments, and there, there may be, Natasha, Teri, a number of us met yesterday on this issue, and it is one of the things we're struggling with, is, the problem, I think, a little bit, is that we're being held in a very different way. Rules go through every, all the time, and we've used the exact process that the law requires. And, and somehow, this got more emotional, and as I said, I, I don't, I was very surprised that the Lieutenant Governor showed up, and then, before you knew it, it was over. So, I mean, my thinking on that is, that could have involved some dialogue that we probably would have been, would have been helpful. But there's a point where, I see, you know, we are, we're struggling with that same thing. But I, but I would say, I mean, Teri's bringing great leadership downstairs to this, she's got a lot of field experience, our own folks, it's a little bit, you know, in the spirit that Kathy said about how do we, or I guess Lupe also, how do we acknowledge our own, start with ourselves? There's a, I'm not disputing what you say, because it's just a fact of life, there is distrust. The part that's painful is, these folks have dedicated their lives to these special ed kids, and, and adults, you know, right through '26, so it's kind of like, of all people to be distrusted, it's painful that, how are we, you know? We're the ones who've given our life to this. Having said that, there's parents that, all the way back to my days in Farmington, we had, in those days, a lot of center. those days, a lot of center programs, and you'd just see the pain and concern and worry that I would have had also, about, you know, what are they trying to do? You know, it's hard not to be suspicious of a system. I'm just saying for the record, it's undeserved. I mean, and then in terms of following the process and all the input from the public, and then if you look at the way that was catalogued and compared, I mean, it was as rigorous as anything we've ever done. So a little bit about our worry is not to, not to set a precedent that somehow we have to do more than everyone else does in rulemaking, because you'd be doing nothing 24/7. But there's probably some, there's room for more dialogue in that.
I think this is the constituency and the feeling of, as a special ed parent myself, you know, we see services, always fighting to get services for our kids and never getting enough funding, or, you know what I mean, and being told that somehow we're draining this, they're going to care. I've had people say, administrators say, I mean, we have to care about the other kids. Because your, you know, your kids, you know, I'm advocating for them. You can advocate for him, but I'm advocating for everybody else because he's hurting other kids or, you know, financially or whatever. So I think there's a whole experience of these, of parents that have led them to this feeling of, you know, of high skepticism in the system. And it's not anything personal towards anybody. It could be anybody in that position. It hasn't, I don't think has anything to do with anybody personally.
I think that's probably accurate. I'm just trying to say, particularly since we're the family here for our own department, you and we, that, you know, that just, it is painful to them. They worked hard on this. And, and, you know, so I could send it across the street, you know, and maybe that makes everyone feel better. I don't think it's going to go anywhere. So there's, that's why we're talking through, what's the strategy on this, to try to actually make things better. But I.
I think maybe even sitting with the people who have some of the objections at, with the strongest voices on objection.
It's not an option now, the way this sits. That's the problem. The problem is the rules.
Well, if it's going to go through another cycle, because isn't the choice sort of withdraw, submit, or wait till and go through another cycle?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's probably going to go through another cycle.
Right. So then there's maybe an opportunity, when it goes through the second time, to find out what the objections were.
It's an opportunity. I would agree with that. I'm just, yes, I would agree with that. I'm just saying, if you're talking about the decision at this point, that isn't an opportunity at this point. It's either send it over or not, let it die, and then start over. And that's, that, I'm a little, you know, yesterday, our discussion is, I don't want to appear non-supportive of our staff by letting it sit, but I don't want to go through a token and make it look like, you know, oh, we've done the right thing, and it's not going to move. So we're still struggling through some of that here. And I do want to be clear, since, I mean, I don't want to second-guess, I'm disappointed, that's true. I don't want to leave the feeling that Lieutenant Governor doesn't have his own experiences that, you know, give him reason to do what he did. I don't, you know, I don't attribute malice to this, but it's disappointing. And I think, so we're struggling. To answer your major question, I mean, we're struggling with it. I get your point about if it were to start all over again, and we'd have to all kind of pow-wow on that. But for now, that's not an option. The option's either send it and let it sit, or just not act at this point. And, I mean, a little bit of me is thinking.
Okay. Well, if there's anything I can do to help.
Okay.
I am, I am happy to do whatever I can.
Okay. Thank you for that. Did you guys want to add anything to that? Are you okay? Okay. Thanks so much.
Yep.
So, Marty, good job. Consent agenda.
I really want to talk about that.
So is there a motion?
I move the consent agenda.
Kathleen, supported by?
Lupe.
Lupe. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. Further comments by board? Okay, then, next meeting, and I think Mertz said also she'll post your, at least the tentative meeting dates that you have in terms of superintendent search, but the next kind of regular meeting of our board will be March 17th. And some of your other meetings are prior to that time, it looks like. And then there's some question about the 18th that Mertz and others have got to resolve.
I think three in the, twenty years ago, maybe four.
You would think, I mean, I don't want to presuppose, but hopefully there's another date that can be found on that. That's important, pretty important decision. The 18th may be the final one, so. Okay, thank you.